Good evening. We're going to call our committee meetings to order tonight for our January 28th meeting. And first, I want to call on the mayor. Yeah, I believe he has a presentation to present.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have our most recent Seven Hills Business of the Month here today. Valerie's here. She is co-owner of the Seven Hills Sour Dough, and they're being recognized by our city. Where Seven Hills Sour Dough, located at 7490 Ledwin Drive, specializes in making sourdough-based bakery and bread products using organic flour and the best clean ingredients they can source. Simple ingredients, simply delicious. They pride themselves on offering superior products and excellent customer service. They are grateful for your support each and every day. Where Seven Hills Sour Dough was officially launched in 2024 at the Saturday Cogga Valley Farmer's Market located in Cogga Valley National Park. A few weeks later, they opened their booth at, on our Thursday Seven Hills Market in Seven Hills. And late fall, they obtained a vendor space in the Northside Marketplace in Avon, I'm sorry Akron. Valerie Anne founded the company and is the main face behind the business. However, Seven Hills Sour Dough would not be possible without the support of Valerie's husband, John, and their two children, Ellie and Edison, who will often be seen helping at the farmer's market. Seven Hills Sour Dough has developed quite a supportive customer base since they began their business. Their client definitely has favorites from plain sourdough to cinnamon sugar or everything bagel sourdough loaves to brown butter chocolate chip sourdough cookies. Seven Hills Sour Dough also strives to have a very friendly website, www seven hills sourdough.com. Customers can order their favorite items and choose their most convenient pickup option, either at the farmer's market location, Northside Marketplace, or porch pickup in Seven Hills. Seven Hills Sour Dough also offers local delivery. Seven Hills Sour Dough maintains their focus on quality ingredients and also provides the kind of service that connects with customers and keeps them coming back day after day. Some of the reviews mention, and I quote, "Absolutely the best sourdough around. Great pricing, top quality, and it's amazing." Seven Hills Sour Dough also takes part in our community, being active in our school district, Boy Scouts, and donating to our youth high program during the holiday season. Where Seven Hills Sour Dough endeavors to operate with integrity and to provide their customers with a delicious and healthy product. The city is very pleased that Seven Hills Sour Dough and Valerie Anne are part of the Seven Hills Business Community and appreciative of their involvement. Now, therefore, I, Anthony B. Osceada, Mayor of Seven Hills, and together with all city officials and residents of Seven Hills, do hereby deem it an honor and a pleasure to extend this proclamation to Seven Hills Sour Dough as the Business of the Month in the City of Seven Hills. Thank you, Valerie. I'm slightly under the weather. I apologize if I missed a word or two. But I'm a customer. I've tried their food. My personal favorite is their everything bagel loaf. So if you haven't had a chance to order some or stop at the farmer's market, I promise you won't be disappointed in this high-quality sourdough, the best I've ever had, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you, Mr. President, for that time.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. We're now going to go to our committee meetings. First, we're going to go to Rules, Orands, and Ethics with Councilman Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have anything in the folder this evening. Does anyone else has anything? Make a motion to adjourn? Do you have a second?
Kelly, yes. Are you second? I'm sorry.
Real quick, I'm gonna...
Are you going to appoint her first?
I'm going to appoint Council President Kelly to the Rules and Orands Committee this evening since Councilman Martin and Councilman Snitzky are absent. Okay, Councilman Elliott.
Is that a motion?
I'll second that motion.
Roll call.
Elliott, yes.
Curiousness, yes.
Costanzo, yes.
Kelly, yes.
Mara, yes.
Okay, Councilman Elliott.
Okay, I don't have anything in my folder this evening. Make a motion to adjourn.
Kelly, you second?
All in favor, roll call?
Kelly, yes.
Elliott, yes, we're adjourned. Thanks.
Thank you. We know got a Parks and Rec with Councilman Morrow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Open Parks and Rec at 6:07. I have nothing in my folder. Just wanted to share a couple of things. I'd like to thank the Tameco family for reaching out to me regarding the lights at the parking lot right out here. Did not realize it was, you know, a disturbance at night. They are pretty bright. I'd also like to thank Director Berger for her swift work on that. They will now be on a timer to, you know, not disturb residents around. So thank you to her, and thanks to Tamecos for reaching out about it. And then also, I'd like to share an update on the pavilion. We are in talks or, you know, kind of finalizing a place for it over by Cricket Park, just right down the path here. Should have something by February 1st. Besides that, I have nothing else. Does anyone have any questions, comments from the audience? Members of the committee? Members of council? Okay, with that, I'll close. Parks and Rec at 6:08. Do I have a second?
Elliott, second.
Roll call.
Elliott, yes.
Kelly, yes.
Mara, yes.
Okay, thank you. We're now going to go to Planning, Zoning, and Economic Development, and I'm going to move to appoint Council Pro temp Costanzo to the Planning and Zoning Committee while Councilman Snitzky's absent for the next three meetings. Do I have a second?
Kelly, second.
Roll call.
Kelly, yes.
Costanzo, yes.
Mara, yes.
Curiousness, yes. We have a couple of things in the parks, I mean, in the Planning and Zoning Committee this evening, and the first is the, the development agreement for the Rockside Road PUD. And everybody on council has received that, and I'd like to call Ed Foley up to speak about this. If anybody says any questions, they can ask Ed Foley.
I'll just give you some... It's been a long-term investment of time working on Rockside Road. This is like the third or fourth go-around, so. And it, the projects changed because our knowledge of what the land can do has changed, economic conditions change. And we got a project in front of us now in the development agreement that doesn't reflect office because office doesn't exist. Need for more office, but it does reflect the aging of America, so it's a rehab hospital, which we think is a real prize. You know, the mayors run the economics. I've looked at it. I think it's a, it's a great addition to the community. So I just looked quickly at the objectives we set for negotiations. If I could just very quickly identify those. We said we wanted to somehow promote the health and safety and welfare of all who live, work, and shop and visit in Seven Hills, and we wanted to see if we couldn't move towards a safety station to the north. So this, this agreement does allow for TIF money to buy a parcel of land for the city that should that time come up, that's available to us. The other thing it does is it, it says traffic management. We know that Crossview Road is, is not a good intersection, and you can't dump more. I think the mayor, you said one time that if we put any more traffic on that road, we'd have to deal with Crossview. I think I heard you say that way back when. And we're putting more traffic on Crossview when you get, you know, 150 homes coming out onto it. So this agreement allows for funds to make a right turn lane on Crossview, which I think is really, and realign it, so it's not going to have that more than 90-degree angle, which I think is outstanding. It should have a significant and sustainable net economic benefit to the city. This agreement does that. The economics have been running past the threshold that, that we were seeking. We want commercial development before residential. That's a longstanding objective, and this, this agreement is as solid as any we've ever had. It speaks to an incredible amount of things that have to happen before houses are built. And it's in Exhibit G. If you want to look in your packet, you'll see that it's in there. In addition to what's referenced in the development agreement. We want a sense of place for Seven Hills. We'd like to have interconnected. This is designed to be a PUD. It's a unique project. It's not the same project, not the size of the others. But it still allows for sidewalks coming down Crossview to be replaced, so the people from the homes can walk to the restaurants. It is going to have this pocket park that is now is going to be off of this land from the safety station. They made provisions in the property using TIF dollars for us to have a pocket park with a beautiful gazebo looking over downtown. So that, there's drawings in your packet that you can take a look at that. It is sensitive to the neighbors to the south. It still has the six homes to the south, freestanding homes, so that we buffer the existing homes on Stephen Drive and all that's back there. And the city organi, one of the, last one, I'll just jump to it. The city has to organizationally develop, and I think we are. We don't, we don't have tremendous people infrastructure, but we got great people. And I think we're showing that, that maybe even with, with a few people and digging in, we can, we can make a lot of things happen. So that's going to have to continue. Who's going to do all the permitting and the inspections? And there's a lot that has to be done, and it's spoken to in the agreement. That's just a high-level review of things that are in it, but I want you to know that the mayor's worked very hard on it, and he's kind of gone back and forth with me, and I've worked on it. And I, I'm, this is the, a very solid agreement. That's, that's my assessment. It's solid from every angle that I needed it to be solid against the criteria that we had. There's no compromises. And any questions? We have work to do. There's wetland variances that have to be granted. We have to change the PUD to allow for some changes in the retail. And there's things in here. When you read it, you say, we've got work to do as a city to get ready for this development. But it's all stuff that we're comfortable with. We've talked about, we've agreed to. So that's just a high-level review of... And if you have any specific questions, I'd be glad to see if I can answer them.
Before we go, I just want to state that we're looking, get it through committee today, but have three readings of council, so that there's tremendous opportunity for public scrutiny, council scrutiny. So that's going to take us the entire month of February into March. So we're looking at six weeks. I don't know how many pages it is, but it's a thick packet with all the 37 pages, but there's tons of exhibits. So the more information that we can put out there, the better, and this is the whole reason why we strived for a development agreement dating back even to the previous mayor, is that it, when it's going to be done, this dictates what will be built. It dictates what our responsibility is, and it dictates what the responsibility of developer is. So there's not, people don't come back a year from now, six months, yeah, or the developer or whatever, and, and you get any he said, she said. So it's very specific in the number of homes. It's very specific in the hospital. It's very specific in the out parcels. It even puts forth how the lands, the legwork for the landscaping, so, you know, the eyesore won't be there anymore, et cetera, et cetera. What we have here is a culmination. We worked on it for a year and a half. There was tremendous back and forth. There was a lot of yin and yang. Now is not the time for kudos because it hasn't happened yet. But Mr. Foley did a tremendous job, and so did all our legal team, our internal legal team, our external legal team, our building department, council president. But this would represent, if this does get passage, the farthest that we've ever taken the project in the history of the 20-year history of the project. We never got to a point where we actually had an agreement on all fronts. On all fronts, that's the tax abatement, TIF, what'll be built, how it'll be built, the economic return, the things that are going to happen for the city. I'm pleased that a project decided still they were able to dedicate land for a public purpose on Crossview, and that behind that land is going to be a beautiful gazebo, not built with city money that's going to overlook downtown. So one of the things, we, we wanted to make sure that there was public space, and there is. And there's private investment in making the infrastructure better in this corridor. But I can't say it better than Mr. Foley. I just want to, we're not going to rush it through. We're, you know, three readings. Probably ask for the emergency at the end of the three readings, so that the contractual things will kick in immediately, but that, it's at least six weeks away. So just know you have time to reach out to Ed. Greg Daniels was our outside attorney that did a lot of work on this. He's also regarded as one of the best TIF experts in the entire state of Ohio, and we had him working on this. In conjunction, if this does pass today, there's a piece related to the Parma City School District participation. But then they will, the word through the attorneys is they'll move forward on their piece once we go public with this document. So what I expect is for their part to work in tandem. When ours gets on the agenda, theirs will get on the agenda, and with any luck, everything will pass about the same time.
Very good. And I, Justin, when you and I went to Jogger Lake to look at the houses, the residential design manual was the birth from that visit. So you have in your packet here, our houses are going to look different than Jogger Lake with the white slabs. You know, it's, this, ours has some character to it with stone and color, and so I, I feel good about, I want you, I feel good about the document. If I didn't, mayor knows I'd say so.
Chairman Foley is a real stickler, and the things for those at home and how, potentially, it's important to remember that this property is privately owned, number one. We have, as a partner with Economic Development and the administrator of zoning and the administrator of the PUD district, within the confines allowed by our charter, they can develop the property they want, in the manner they want. We can't tell them to build an ice rink. We can't tell them to build a crocker park. They got to build what they think is economically viable, but, but allowed by our code. And we are confined to what's in charter passed by the residents, and this deal does conform to that. So another thing is, they went to market with at least four different developers. Three since I've been around. And there was not appetite for the crocker park-type model in that location. There just was zero appetite for that. And the next best thing for us, we thought, at the time when we redid some of this stuff, was office building. The office buildings that we have on Lombardo have been very beneficial to the city, as the city runs mainly off of income tax. The school district runs off of property tax mostly. And we were looking to secure something of a commercial entity that would drive a lot of income tax. And with the current work-from-home model, there's not a ton of office space being developed. Matter of fact, there's tons of vacancies, particularly on Rockside, and people can go get a vacant building for 50 cents on an hour or less. So the project pivoted then to what I think is a really good reasonable substitution, is this hospital, joints, hips, shoulders, things like that. They were intrigued by the location because of the number of hotels there, because family members want to help people support their loved ones during surgery, et cetera, et cetera. And that's a big revenue driver. The hospitals, the doctors, the nurses, et cetera. They have good salaries. Those salaries drive good income taxes for the city, and everything in this document, the developer has to make a significant investment towards making that hospital happen before they can build anything else. So they're going to have to run sewers, plumbing, et cetera, et cetera, electric. There's no tie-ins on this property. It's quite a different operation than redevelopment. Like Meyer was a redevelopment. So all the sewers, electric, everything utility you need to do a building was already there from Kmart. This is a rock quarry that does not have any kind of infrastructure to support a development, and all that needs to be built, and then they have to put the foundation in before they can start the back. So this contract dictates that they have to make a significant investment before they can build the single-family homes, the single-family dwellings in the back, which, in my understanding, are very, very popular, and they'll have no problem selling. But we're securing in this document the part that we need for the economic future of the city, and that would be the hospital. I'll just add, there is contract language in here. They have 18 months to start the program. So within 18 months, something goes, and that's not unusual. Our outside attorney that's expert in these areas says this is rather usual and customary, that over 18 months, something where to go, whatever, economy, interest rates, or something, that they can exercise a right to not to move forward. But that's normal. The many deals I've seen in the private sector that I worked on were a year or more as well. So I, but I want to set the expectation with council and those at home that the legal world we live in has these kind of clauses. But in addition to those clauses, we have the successors and signees. So if the developer to start the project and somebody else would take it over, or they would sell a piece, et cetera, et cetera, down the road, the maintenance of the screaming stay in place. So they can't do a little shell game and get out of the deal.
They can't escape the development.
The deal will go with the property. So we're protected in that manner.
Very good.
I think there's so many things. I can't possibly touch on everyone in the time allotted, but we have the next six, seven weeks to answer any questions.
Just one last thing. We had their engineers and our engineer in the room this afternoon, and our engineer did a great job of help coalescing information, and we updated the packet that you may have. There's three changes in the exhibits based on the meeting we had just today. And I, the exhibits are really good, but, you know, Wetlands, for example, he brought up some things. We changed the exhibit, and we were in better shape to go for those variances now. So I, we're bullish on the document, but the mayor's council's a good one. We have to be, understand reality. They're not breaking ground next week. This is, this is going to take some time, but we know the steps, and they're in the agreement, and we can follow that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any questions? None? Okay, I'm going to move to put this on the agenda for the next meeting for a first reading. Do I have a second?
Kelly, second.
Roll call.
Kelly, yes.
Costanzo, yes.
Curiousness, yes. And I have one other thing for planning and zoning. You guys all received the draft of the zoning changes. Remember, at our zoning meeting, there's a couple of things that were brought up about fence regulations, and if you, if you look at your, the final draft, 9/31/04, the fence and, fence wall regulations, B, C, and E. The main one was the setback from the property line. The way it is, the way the change would be, the fence shall be set back a minimum of eight inches from the property line, both, both owners. And then the other big one is on page 143. It's about the gross weight of a vehicle that could be parked in your driveway for a professional home office. As you see, it's 8,850 pounds. So those are the main, main changes that were made. And this is what we had talked about, the two main things, the fence setback and the weight of a vehicle being able to be parked in your driveway. So during the meeting tonight, before we do the second reading, I will make a floor motion to amend the ordinance, 3025, with these changes, and we'll vote on it. Is there any questions on that? None? Okay, I'm going to, after, anything else for planning and zoning this evening? Nothing? Okay, I'm going to move to adjourn at 6:25 PM. Do I have a second?
Kelly, second.
Roll call.
Kelly, yes.
Costanzo, yes.
Curiousness, yes. Okay, now we'll go to finance, and I have one thing in my folder for finance. Director Frank, this is an ordinance request for the bands renewal. You want to speak about this? I know we have some guests that want to speak tonight about this.
Yeah, that's correct, President of Council. Thank you. So we have Matt Stew and Catherine Schwartz from our outside legal firm, Bricker Grayden, who are the professionals with this. They're two of the people that I met within the first couple of weeks of starting here in Seven Hills, and very impressive, super responsive, and I've learned a lot in, in this subject. So I'm going to turn it over to them, but bottom line is, is we budgeted to pay down $350,000. And that's, that was the expense budget that you guys approved. And we have a game plan that Matt can speak of over the next X amount of years to, you know, pay these, continue to pay these things down. And we'll pivot as necessary. As you know, we're keeping a, a good eye on our net interest margins and playing that game right now to maximize our profits and, and keep everything plus. So with that said, I'm going to introduce Matt Stew and Catherine Schwartz for any questions.
Hi, I'm Catherine Schwartz, Bond Counsel, and I, Matt's going to talk about the finance plan. Just wanted to generally let you know that what you do is you, you roll over notes. It's a one-year note. You could go out to bond, but based on the dollar amount. Instead, what we need to do legally is make paydowns for those, the projects that are outstanding for more than five years. So that's what we're doing. The legislation looks a lot like the legislation did last year. We're just rolling, rolling it off, ruling it over, taking off one year. Last year, the maximum maturity, if you went to bonds, was 15 years. This year, it's 14 years just because of, of the timing of it. And again, at any point in time, you could choose to go to bonds, but it makes sense. This gives you the flexibility from year to year to pay down the amount that you budget for that year. And I will turn it over to Matt to talk about the finance plan.
Good evening, all council, mayor, administration, members of the audience. Thank you, Director Frank, for allowing us to join you this evening. First and foremost, congrats on a, a healthy 2024 financial performance. That's, I know that doesn't come easy in terms of monitoring budgets and making hard decisions, but the city did a great job in 2024, so congrats. Catherine would say this, and I'll say it just to remind everyone. Everything we do as it relates to debt issuance here at the City of Seven Hills must comply with the Ohio Revised Code, federal tax law, and state law. So we don't get the luxuries of private financing or corporate financings that can do other things. We're guided by the revised code, and we must maintain compliance with that. Game plan, as we've, consistent with last year. Roll the note, pay down from last year's notes. We have notes coming due April 3rd. That's $3,795,000 of notes plus interest. Typically, what we have done, without much deviation, has been to pay down those notes, roll them over for another year, look to them, pay down, and continue that path until we extinguish them in their entirety. Always looking for an opportunity to pay down more if we can, but as Director Frank mentioned, you know, what we have been monitoring is the benefit of keeping your cash and reinvesting it at a rate higher than the cost of the borrowing. So we don't like to play that arbitrage game if it's, if we're underwater. But as an example, notes currently are being priced in the low to mid 3.5% range. currently are being priced in the low to mid 3.5% range, and where the city can invest in Star Ohio at about 4.5%. So there is some value in keeping cash and investing it, but we have to maintain, again, compliance with state law, federal tax law, but we have the luxury of knowing that you are at least not underwater in that dynamic. That cash that you keep in the fund balances and don't use to pay down this debt are earning a healthy interest above the note borrowing. So we'll continue down that path. I know the mayor's asked me to keep a sharp eye on that, as has Director Frank, and if that goes in the opposite direction, where rates come down substantially over the course of next year, we'll seek possibly an alternate strategy and look to accelerate with cash an additional paydown amount above 350 going forward next year. So with that, I'll stop and see if there's any questions.
Any questions? No?
No.
Thank you. Simple enough.
Yeah. Yeah, it just... Really, I just, you know, I like to put it in layman's terms. Our debts are greater than... I'm sorry, our assets are much higher than our liability, and we're still making money. Our net interest margin's positive. The interest rates on the notes have gone up in the last few years. We're all understanding that interest rates have gone up on the debt, but we're still to the net positive, and that's what all of us are here, Matt and Aaron and myself are watching. If in the event next year that analysis doesn't prove itself out, we have the ways and means to pay down that debt. So it's still... What we're doing right now makes sense, and if it gets to a point it doesn't make sense, we've been blessed with the ability to alter that course. Leaving at that.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, gentlemen. Have a nice evening.
Okay, so I'm going to move to put this bands renewal on the agenda for the meeting on February 11th with an emergency. Do I have a second?
Mauro, second.
Roll call.
Mauro, yes.
Curiousus, yes. That's all I have for finance. Does anybody have anything else? Nothing? Okay. So I'm going to move to adjourn finance at 6:32 PM. Do I have a second? Roll call.
Mauro, yes.
Curiousus, yes. We'll start our meeting momentarily.
Since he's not here, I'll say Martin rule.